Tonight is to swear in our new board members. And our old, Dennis, you're not the old board member. Re-elected former appointed board member. So Dennis, Scott, and Michael will stand over there.
Dennis has a month on me.
That's right.
One at a time or all three at once?
We'll do all three at once. Got what you all know your own names.
Don't be shy.
Yeah, we're real informal here. Despite the fact that they're all dressed up.
The three of them look great. They look great. But that's the first one time.
Wait on my pictures. You need to raise a right hand. Aye. Your name, sorry. Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Board of Education.
Of Celine Area Schools, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Of Celine Area Schools, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right. Welcome, gentlemen. Our next order of business is the election of board officers for the 2017 board year. According to our board policy, people let interest be known. So the chair will nominate Tim Austin. Trustee Tim Austin is president of the board. He will nominate himself, Paul Henning for vice president of the board, and trustee Delve for secretary of boarding in this year. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the election is done. So can I have a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting of January 10th, 2017 at 6:34 PM? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries six zero. All right. Swap here. Tim?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. You also get my orange coat.
Okay, so I'll call to order the regular Board of Education meeting on January 10th, 2017. This will be the first time for public comment. As a member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on agenda of a future meeting by filling out the how to address the Board of Education form as provided prior to each meeting. Please note the Board of Education members will not respond directly to public comments.
Do we have any?
In the new year, I am Ann Herskright with the Foundation for Celine Area Schools, here to get you all excited about Snow Blast, our annual fundraiser that is coming up Saturday, February 4th. Travis Point Country Club, 6 to 11 in the evening. Our committee is working tirelessly. It's going to be exciting, live auction, silent auction, wine pull, and gift card tree. Some live entertainment with Mr. Bezu as a DJ, and we are excited. So you are all officially invited. And the website is up on support fsas.org for you to register. Many of you have already. We'd love to see you all there. Very excited, of course, always our strategic grant that we're raising funds for, for the Hornet Hub, as well as the continual pitching rights.
I would like to invite a public comment. Nancy, do you want to go forward to introduce yourselves?
Hello, my name is Nancy Cowan, and I'm the new director of the Celine Area Senior Center. I've been here about five weeks, and I've received a very warm welcome from everyone in Celine, and I'm really happy to serve the community and all the seniors in the area. So if you would like to learn more about the Senior Center or have to refer someone to us, we're happy to help and welcome to the smiling faces in the community for them. Thank you.
Just a couple of things. One, I would like to publicly thank the Transportation Department. They have a challenging time of year. This morning was no different. At 3:00 AM, the snow started. There was different levels of snow. Obviously, the ice in this evening's run that they faced, particularly on the back roads. I very much appreciate their efforts this season. Challenging time. I look forward to seeing how that goes this entire winter, heading into that season. Was a busy break. Well, many people were away. We used the opportunity. Mr. Clary's Department of Operations got a lot of work done. We also had a lot of work relative to some warranty work associated with last summer's bond work was able to take place. And so the buildings were active, a lot of other staff were in getting stuff done. I do appreciate the time spent. Particularly, you know, our human resources, the business offices have a lot of work to do with end of the year, kind of tax year and calendar year issues as it relates to kind of moving forward. And so I appreciate their extra time and effort that they all put in over the break. Next, there will be some more bond activity coming up over the next couple of board meetings. We intend to potentially get some bids, getting ready to bid packages out by the end of this week. We're meeting next month, this coming Monday. To go over a few other items and intend to get everything out here in the next little bit. So probably by the Valentine's Day Board of Education meeting, we'll be prepared to begin awarding bids, some little packages. So if you think back to where we were last year, relative to our timeline, we're much further ahead, although we really want to get on the street. It's going to be an active bid cycle. We're recruiting bidders right now based on what we know in terms of getting what done this summer.
Board of Education members, anybody?
I wanted to comment. Estrada?
Yes.
So I went to the memorial here for Ryan Estrada, and I want to thank all the people involved with that. I think you guys did a really nice job. I know it was above and beyond, and I'm very touched. So thank you for all your hard work.
I want to add completely differently. I was able to attend and help officiate with the hooding of our newest doctoral candidate named Stephen Latch. Heard of him? His dissertation was entitled "The Relationship Between Instructional Strategies and Teacher Revaluation in Select Michigan Schools." And apparently, I got one of the best pictures of him from the floor. Congratulations, Dr. Latch.
Can I have a recommended motion to approve the agenda as revised? No, Molly Garcia unfortunately was not able to make it. So we move her to a future meeting.
So moved? Support. Stephen, have I say aye?
Aye.
Special reports, co-op presentation by?
I'll call forward Jody Galinsky and Mary Viesel to come forward and share some information. One of the things we've talked about, particularly around some of our goal areas, is really making sure that we have opportunities for our students to experience, and I'll call them real-world experiences, but certainly transition to what's next for them. And so the work-based learning, reality-based education is something we really want to do, make sure we continue to strive for. We're very fortunate, under Jody's direction, Mary has an outstanding job of really growing this program back from where it was several years ago. So we'd like to hear some more about it tonight.
So I'm Jody Galinsky. I'm the principal of the Southwest Washtenaw Consortium. For those of you that don't know me, what the consortium is, is six districts. And it is Chelsea, Dexter, Lincoln, Manchester, Mylan, and Celine. And all of those superintendents are my bosses, so to speak. They're my governing board. And a part of Career and Tech Ed is co-op. And Mary is the, she's been, well, I've been here 31 years. This is my 31st year for the consortium and for Celine. Mary's been here 10 years. She started out in the CTE Center, then went to kind of overseeing co-op, and then now she is a special populations coordinator. And what that means is she helps students that are from the other districts that are on an IUP. And she kind of does the transition because the teachers can always go there to share the information. So that's what Mary does. She attends all the IUPs and all the other districts and supports the students in a wonderful manner. Besides the co-op piece. Mary's always very, very busy. So I just wanted to start out by giving us a little history about co-op. And Mary and I are both very passionate about this because we are products of co-op. And I'm sad to say that it was back when we did shorthand and all of that. Scary stuff. So previously, up until this point, we had about two or three students per year participating in the co-op and work-based learning. The students must have at least 50% of their curriculum under their belt before they can go out into placement, and it needs to be aligned with their EDP. They also have to maintain their enrollment in the career and technical education class they're enrolled in, and they have to be recommended by the instructor.
Now, the term work-based learning encapsulates not only work experience, where you might not have the career and tech ed element to it, but it also includes the co-op or the capstone experience. So for students that haven't been enlightened by career and technical education, I still feel that there are so many skills that you can learn in the world of work outside of the classroom. But we see the classroom and the world of work as a complement of one another. So one is not more important than the other. Because our instructors, I'm going to speak specifically in career and tech ed, they try to bring real-world skills. They have their advisory committees. They have individuals within their community come in, help them evaluate their equipment and their skill sets. And then we also have the state of Michigan that comes to us and say, these are the things that you should teach them. So actually, co-op is a complement between the curriculum and going farther into their curriculum, hopefully finding a professional outlet. Students can be paid or unpaid. The only difference really is the students can receive compensation. Right now, minimum wage has just been increased in January to $8.90 an hour. But students for, from 16 to 17-year-olds, they can start with a 90-day training wage. They can then, after the 90 days are complete, then they can be paid up to 85% of minimum wage. But I always fight for at least minimum wage for our kids because they do have excellent skills. They have techniques that will make them very marketable in the future to help them pay for their education or to go out into the world of work themselves. So students, they have to work a minimum of 10 hours by state mandate for them to be granted credit. They can have, depending on the school district. So for Celine, we have five hours in the high school. They can have up to two hours of release from their schedule. Other schools that might have six or seven hours in the day could have up to three hours. You can have no more than 50% of your day at a work-based learning experience. So my job as the co-op coordinator, capstone coordinator, work-based learning coordinator, is to monitor their hours, making sure that they do not exceed the 24 hours if they are under the age of 18. Making sure that certain equipment, they are knowledgeable, have been trained on, that they have the skill development going into the workplace. And safety is paramount to me and to their parents. And my whole position is to limit our liability or any other school district that I work for. All employers that are placed in a, for students to be placed in a job, I have to have proof of their workman's comp and their general liability insurance. We don't want our students injured. But if something does happen, we want them to be covered effectively so that if something happens and they have to go to the ER, their care is being covered and it's not falling on the parent's responsibility.
So we worked very hard to create community partners for employment opportunities for our students. We did classroom to boardroom, where we invited all sorts of business and industry folks to come in and hear about the programs, take tours of the building. And in each of the individual programs, we have our advisory committees that Mary mentioned, that each individual program has their own separate advisory committee, and it's made up of experts in the field, basically. And they share their knowledge and whatever else they can to make sure that the program is running smoothly and it's up to date. Also, this year, I've started going to Rotary and making connections, not only with Celine, but in Mylan, and did a presentation down in Mylan not too long ago and picked up new folks that would like to hire some of our students. So we have currently, we had currently last year, 38 students.
Right.
In co-op. It was amazing.
Right. It was actually, it was too big, to tell you the truth. But we don't, you know, my whole philosophy and Jody's philosophy is we don't want to limit these kids in what they have available to them. Right now, we have about 21. I just placed another kid today with a new employer in advanced manufacturing. And local individuals, you know, Dave Rogers and Gary Yadley hired one of our students. So we usually add about five per semester or five per trimester. You know, and as word grows of the opportunities, so do those students that are interested in accessing employment and those skills. Because there are so many skills that you can learn within working.
And over the years, almost every program has had at least one student in co-op. Probably our toughest area to place is cosmetology because technically, they cannot, until they have a license, work on anyone. So they can only be a receptionist. And sometimes that's a little bit tough for a student just to be a receptionist day in and day out when they want to make that their career. Our ag program, currently, 100% of that program, those students do a work-based learning. They have a work-based learning opportunity through their SAE, and that stands for Supervised Ag Experience. So they have a lot of opportunity. Tim Tomosik is here, and I'm going to have him speak about his internships through AES.
So Ed Shaw, I'm Tim Tomosik. Autotech Instructor, that's my official title here. And of course, you're president. 15 years ago or so, I had a group approach me called AYES. Stands for Automotive Youth Education System. And it's a national group started by General Motors. And basically, General Motors realized that they were having a very, very difficult time getting good, quality technicians. The thing about toolboxes is they're on wheels. And when they have a problem with a technician, or the technician doesn't like the dealership, or the drama that goes on at these dealerships, they pull the toolbox of their truck, they load it up, and they leave. So you put all this training, all this time, and all this money into these technicians, and then they leave. So their thought, their, the thought process was, well, if we get these technicians early on, when they're young and they're moldable and you can manipulate these kids, we'll train them, and we'll teach them, and we'll do what we want to them, and then they'll stay. And we'll, you know, train them good, we can salary, wages, and benefits, all that kind of stuff. So they came up with this model of the AYES program. And they were actively trying to get me, at least 15 years ago, we were at the old high school still, and we knew we were moving to this new high school, and we're packing, and we're getting ready. Kept on putting them up, no, no, no. And then as soon as we moved to the new high school, there they were again, and they wanted me to sign up. So it's a certification process. You don't just put your name on the line and you're in. So you have to go through this process. You have to be NAHTEP certified. And they come in, and they look at all this stuff, and curriculum, and, you know, tools and equipment, and finance, all that kind of stuff. So of course, we get in. And basically, it is, what the whole program is about is taking these kids at the end of their junior year, after they've had one year of Autotech, and placing them in dealerships. And I don't get them their jobs. I don't actively go out there and go to LaFontaine and talk to the service manager and say, I've got three kids for you, here you go. What I do is I put together like, it's like speed dating, but for jobs. So last year, we've been kind of experimenting the last couple of years, and I have all these service managers in the Washtenaw County area. And I probably had eight or 10 of them last year. And we bring them here, because if you feed them, they'll come here. So we bring them in, we feed them, and we've already had a meeting with the parents and the students. And we tell the students, this is not a summer job before you go off to four-year university. It's not what this program is about. This is a career, and you need to be looking at this for the longer haul, three to five years at least. And there are so many different jobs in auto. You don't have to be a tech. There's sales, there's management, there's parts. I mean, it's just a huge, vast field. So you got to get the kid in the door, though, just to find all those other avenues. So we talk to the kids, make sure they know what the whole process is and what's entailed in it. And we have them come in, and they have a big application they have to fill out, and they have to get attendance and discipline and their grades and just all that stuff. And we give it to them, we give them two or three weeks to get that done. And the ones that don't get it done, they don't get a chance. So we usually end up with about eight to 10 kids that really, truly want to do this. So the next step is we bring in the service managers, and Mary and I and Jody, we usually talk with them individually as a group about, here is, you know, Tim Austin. And Tim Austin's got great attendance, he's there every day, he works hard every single day, he's on task and all those kinds of things. And we move on to the next one. And we're very honest. We say, you know what, this kid's got poor attendance, but, you know, he's out with the appendix. And, you know, so we're honest, and this kid is, you're going to have to work with this one a little bit. You know, we don't try to snow them because I don't need a phone call later and says, why didn't you tell me this? You know, why didn't you tell me this kid has gone three days every week? You know? So we have this process last year where we had each service manager interview each kid for like five minutes, five, 10 minutes? And then we're like, okay, move. And then, so everybody goes around, kind of round robin. And then the service managers, for all the kids that they like, and they want to have them come out for a job shadow experience, they'll put that kid's name on the back of their business card. And then alls I do is deliver the business cards to the students. So Tim, two guys, two service managers wanted you to come and interview at their dealerships and spend half a day there on job experience, and that's the next step. And that part is done. Once I hand out the business cards to these students, I'm like, my game is, I'm done for now. You go out there and job shadow, do your real interviews with those people. And then, in last year, last two or three years, we've had every single kid hired that we put out there. And I still get phone calls like, do you have anybody? I'm dying over here. So it's getting, certainly, the clientele is good, it's getting better. The job prospects are even better. They're looking for kids out there. And then, so everybody gets hired by May or June, hopefully. And then we come back, and Mary and I put on a little class about how to play good in the sandbox. Because as you know, it's not about just can you do the technical skills. It's can you get along with the guy that's next to you in the bay next to you? Can you get along with the parts people? Can you get along with the service managers? It's all about human relationships. So we have a whole day of class about that, or half a day. And then we send them out there, and we just kind of check on them every once in a while and show up every once in a while, make sure they're wearing their safety glasses, and, you know. So it's a great program. And so they go through all that stuff all their whole summer, and they work regular 40-hour-a-week job. And then come their senior year, they'll be back in my class for one hour, and then they're on co-op. And then Mary and I kind of keep track of them. And sometimes we get them as seniors, they start out, and they just leave. And, you know, that has happened, but usually, it's a junior year. So it's a great program.
And I think, too, the nice thing about it is they get to pay toolbox through the program.
Right. So there's a toolbox in the student keys, I think a third of it, toolbox in the tools. If they're there for, I think, three years or five years, two or three years, they own it outright. You know, if they decide to leave then, they get to take it with them. If they leave after a year, they can buy it, but they got to pay the rest of it off. And there's, you know, if they leave, the district or the dealership will buy it. So there's a system for all that. It's all stamp on tools, of course, which are the best tools out there. And, you know, the best thing is, we have these people that come back and they say, you know, the stuff that we've learned here, the stuff with the AYES program, they've hired other techs from wherever, and they're just clueless, you know? And that's the best thing about it. Because they come back, and we've done a lot of work to prepare them, and get them there and get them in those jobs, and they come back and they really have learned some stuff. And that's really the reason we really do it. So questions? And I'll go sit over here and reply.
So in the past and present, you know, I have serviced all areas of Washtenaw County, Lenawee County, and Wayne County. I don't stop the student because they have a job over at Showplace Farms in Adrian, the farthest reaches of Adrian, or I'm not going to say you can't be in automotive marketing in Plymouth. I support these kids wholeheartedly when they, when or if they find opportunities. And at that point in time, then, I take out an evaluation for them, if they're Celine students, twice per trimester. If they're semester kids, then I still take them out, but on a semester basis. I'm supposed to make contact with students and their employers within every nine weeks. And so I am out of the building quite a bit, to tell you the truth. And that's okay. But you can see, you know, we have students right now at Advanced Industries. In Chelsea, he's a CAD student. Or we have had students at Common Grill. We've had students, as I said, automotive marketing at JCW in Plymouth. Or up to, you know, Manchester Early Childhood Center, or...
We can keep going.
I can, I can. Because, you know, the nice part, I was born and raised here in Washtenaw County, but I like meeting new people. And so it's nice to go see their business, tour their facilities, make sure that they're safe environments, make sure that they have appropriate placements for the students. So, yeah, I start receiving phone calls, you know, early July. And I had a phone call, I walked in the first day of school. And how many, you know, how many Culinary Arts kids can you send to me? So the word is out on the street, within the community, that we have very good students, well-trained, and efficient workers. We have one student right now, he's an exchange student from Belgium. And he is here for, he's going to be going back to Belgium at the end of the year, but he's working at Young Cabinetry with a master cabinet maker because that's what he wants to do when he goes back. So, you know, these opportunities aren't necessarily available to everybody. You have to have the desire. You have to want to be able to work 10 hours a week and commit to that. But also, some of the problem, too, is pulling the reins in a little bit on our kids because some of those that really find their niche, they want to work more than 24 hours. And we have to have that discussion.
Therein lies the problem sometimes, because we find out this is kids like at work 30 hours or driving a tow truck when he's not supposed to. And Mary sees them on the road, and there's that discussion happening with a Manchester student, Mr. Brisley.
Yes, oh, yeah. So, you know, we have kids all over. And when it actually comes down, we hope to make them lifelong learners. We hope to give them the opportunity. Every student, when they leave the consortium, and especially in work-based learning, they have a resume, they've also learned how to resign effectively. Because I don't want to hear another one of my students, having had this experience years ago, who texts his employer that he wasn't coming back to work, ever. And it's like, no, 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 you're going to learn. You went through the process, you're going to learn the proper way to resign. So everybody learns, you know, how to do it both verbally, write a letter. And in fact, one of our students just recently said, oh, yes, it's me. So that really came in handy. I had that from a couple of years back, and I gave them two weeks' notice. And I said, and you will in the future have a good recommendation. So what kind of skills do students earn by work, by working? As Jody and I both, you know, ascertained, that there are things you don't learn just in the classroom. Go ahead, Jody.
I mean, basic application of curriculum. That's a given, what they're going to get out of their programs. The communication is huge. Knowing how to communicate, like Tim said, playing nice, how to treat people well, having great conversations, not doing it by text all the time. You know, having, look a person in the eye, good a handshake, all of those things. They learn to be leaders. They learn to be creative. They learn to be problem solvers and critical thinkers. They learn how to collaborate. And the interpersonal skills, just the confidence that you'll see in students after they've been out working in industrial... they've been out working in industry. It's, it's truly amazing. Time management, organization, planning, all of those things are so very important.
And we've had a number of our students that have competed for the consortium, that without that element of work, they would have never been as successful. Because there are things you learn, you know, whether it's in culinary arts and you're learning how to garnish appropriately, or, you know, tool usage, those items, those skills are developed through the complement of work and education. So, as I said, we want to develop a passion, we want them to develop a passion for work. I love what I do. I want them to learn to love their job, that it's, that it's not a job, it's going to be a career. And so, you know, it takes time. Is every student successful? No, they're not. I have students that have been, that have resigned. I have had students that have been fired. And it's a learning process. It really is. So, you know, I've always told them, I will help you find the first job. If you get fired and, or terminated, it's up to you to find the second one. But I will support you, you know, along the way. As I said, all, all six districts, we've, we've placed kids all over the counties, the tri-county area. And new this year, we're going to start with hashtag get hired. We have partnered with the transition team. And our vision is to have universities, community colleges, individuals through the trade unions because there is such a vast vacuum of skilled trades individuals, trying to get them into, trying to get our students thinking towards the paid internships after, after high school. You can have a very high-paying opportunity through the apprenticeships, be paid, be trained, and then once that five-year period of time is complete, you have no debt. And that's what, you don't have to have a bachelor's degree to make good wages. And people my age and older are retiring, so there is that vacuum of, in that gap of skilled trades that are needed.
That we hear all the time.
All the, all the time. There's a need. So that's going to be April 20.
Currently, there's 20, now 21 students.
Yep.
In co-op. 13 from Celine, six from Manchester, one from Mylan, and one from Lincoln. So that's what, that's what co-op looks like. Any questions for Mary or myself?
I did co-op at Johnson's, right back, 20 years ago.
And it really does allow the student to, you know, to be that step ahead than their, than their peers, if they have the opportunity to work.
Yeah, definitely interesting. Like you said, you see the whole office now, where you don't get that in, in a classroom necessarily, how they intermingle with their superiors and so forth like that.
Right.
If they're working during the school day, how are they getting there and back? Like, how does, they have to have their own transportation to make this work?
Yes, correct, yes. Many of our students, they'll either work in the morning, you know, first, first or second hour, and then come to the high school, or leave the high school at fourth and fifth hour, and then not return until the following day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Action items. Can I get a recommended motion to appoint the board recording secretary, Patty Walz? The board secretary, Karen Delhey, Superintendent Graden, to serve as the board's business needs for posting legal notices?
So moved?
Support. All papers, please.
Aye.
Six to oh, okay. Discussion items. We have a board retreat scheduled for January 17th at 6:00. Get up, can you for us, all of the kind of get to know the new board members and stuff, as well as, I'll be doing up an agenda. If anybody has any thoughts or anything they want to come up with, email me, call me.
Great. We will have live food, we'll get to food, but I'm glad to eat here.
Consent agenda. Recommended motion to authorize the filing items. It's part of the consent agenda. A, approval of the regular board of education meeting minutes, December 13, 2016. B, approval of payment of general fund accounts payable of January 10, 2017 in the amount of $1,214,913.48. C, approval of payments of bond fund accounts payable of January 10, 2017 in the amount of $79,417.31. D, receive and file the January Curriculum Finance Human Resource Reports. E, approve the filing field trip submitted, as submitted by Superintendent Graden, the varsity dance team national dance competition, March 2nd through 5th, 2017, in Orlando, Florida. And F, approval of the early graduation request as submitted by Superintendent Graden.
So moved?
Support. All signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and items scheduled for next agenda.
Likely we'll have the special education report from this person.
We'll probably file our committee assignments for then. So, this will be the last opportunity for public comment. Okay, our next board meeting is, of education meeting will be held on January 24th, 2017, at 6:30 PM at Liberty Schools, Liberty Media Center. We're going to go into closed session now. So, I'll need a recommended motion to enter closed session of the board of education at 7:10?
So moved?
With intent to reopen at 8:00.
Okay, we'll be for 7:30.
7:30.
So moved on.
Okay, you have them?
Done.
Okay, we'll need a roll call vote, so. Scott?
Yes.
Dennis?
Just aye.
Karen?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes six to zero.
Will there be action taken after the meeting?
No.
Okay. After the closed session?
No action will be taken. Okay, so can I get a motion to adjourn the regular board of education meeting January 10?
Nope.
Oh, that's a, okay.